It is 6:38. I'll declare the community hall meeting of Town and Pond Council for July 18th open. First item on the agenda is Public Works and Maintenance, Council School Division request for school bus pickup location.
Council School Division has requested permission for the Town of Pond to move Bell Avenue bus pickup to the community playground on Crosley. This is where Swampy Cree is built, where they used to be picked up is the old hydro lot where Swampy Cree's building the receiving hall, not the ideal place to be picking up students. So Sam has looked into it and Randy's discussed it and the school division, they're all happy with using the Crosley playground.
Any issues?
The town will look after the roads and sidewalks that we usually do for any pickups.
It's a higher traffic area than Bell.
Yeah.
That's the only concern.
Uh, no, this is...
It's not?
Sorry.
It's not?
Well, they looked into it and lots of vehicles coming from Cross Island would go down that way by Bell.
Oh, yeah.
And this new location is safer on Crosley that the town felt, or the school division felt that way too, and Sam and Randy discussed it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And there's a park for them to play.
Yeah, safer.
All right, um, let's see, Public Safety 2.1, Safer Communities Program.
Sergeant Brent Lemieux from the PRC is wanting to establish a Scan, Safer Communities and Neighborhoods Working Group, and is requesting the town's input as to if the town believes it's worthwhile committee. Sergeant Lemieux has played a role in a scan group in Southend, Manitoba, which provided to be successful as it related to establishing public policing priorities and issues of concerns to municipalities, towns, First Nations, and citizens in general. Recommendation was for council to agree to support confirming that the town is interested in joining Scan Working Group for the Pond area. Randy had had on here resolution to support program and appoint member to committee. However, when we had met Friday, or I guess it was Monday at lunch, there was a bit of discussion about maybe not quite appointing somebody yet to this committee. It was, they were talking about maybe appointing a staff member and even just find out from them what their expectations are of the council.
Yeah.
But that's how it is in support of this program, definitely.
I think from the meeting too, given the timing of the election, but time, by the time you put someone on, why don't you just put a staff member until end of October and then you can change it?
Exactly my thinking, yeah. And of course, we have evidence that this has worked in other locations, so does Sergeant Lemieux, Staff Sergeant Lemieux, so you know, that's a good reason. And the title itself, Safer Communities, hello.
So a resolution that we're...
Everybody okay with a resolution for it?
No.
But that's...
Crystal, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, item number three, 3.1 rezoning application, 2018-01 Guy Hall.
The town has received a rezoning application for the mentioned property. We were given, their first reading was given to the bylaw on June 25th. The public hearing was held earlier tonight, and we heard the discussion and the talk about, and possibly traffic study and everything. And Sammy might want to speak on this too, because it's kind of the same situation as the traffics, have a traffic study with the Tim Hortons, and if we do, if council does want to approve it, then you can put conditions on the rezoning. And I did look into the property taxes as you were talking.
All right, I want to hear it, people, let me see.
Okay.
Didn't you propose that we table it until he comes?
I did propose that in the hearing, but I think we have to...
I have numbers. I spoke to the assessment branch, or yeah, the assessment branch in Swan River, and they said that currently it's assessed, and they're paying, sorry, I don't want to say numbers because it's really not...
It's public information.
Okay.
Look at tax...
Currently it's assessed at $293,800, and they're paying $3,931 in property taxes right now. If this was to be transferred to or changed to business, they will reassess the building at the same time. They're prepared to lower the assessment, then they would apply the higher mill rate to, not higher, higher tax bracket. So she gave me numbers and it would only be about a $2,000 increase in taxes, changing it from church to business.
It's still something that they need to be made aware of.
Yeah, I just, I just really feel that...
Yeah.
You can't be wrong to ask your proceed.
But it's not, is it, I don't know if it's up to the town to tell them that, that should be up to art. I can pass the information on...
It's on TV.
I can pass the information on to art, but it would be art that would have to, or the applicant that would have to let the church know. And they've signed off on per authorization of doing this, the church has.
Yeah, we should, we'll go forward as, unless we're told anything different. I think it should come forward the second that they're reading at the next council meeting, unless we're told otherwise, unless the application is being withdrawn.
I can let Mr. Barbeau know that this would be the possible increase, and that's based on the 2018 mill rate.
Yeah.
And as far as the traffic goes, until they apply for what they're going to put in there, that's going to trigger what's going to be required. Now, when we dealt with the other establishment on Highway 10, Fisher, we were required to have a traffic study. So I would, for me, I'd want the same thing, but it's hard to say right now because I don't think they know what they're going to put in there, so there's no point in having that discussion until they know.
And he wasn't sure what he wanted to do because he didn't want to get stuff in order until he knew if he could even do retail back then.
So could it, could the, in there be some, have it in there somewhere that, depending on what type of business goes in, we may or may not require a traffic study, which would be at the cost of the owner.
Yep, that can be part of the approval, the condition, yeah, it can be a condition on the approval application.
Would that satisfy you guys?
Yeah.
I, I feel also important to say, at least for myself, I can't speak for everybody else, but I can speak for myself. I have been talking pretty much nonstop for about six years, that we, it's very important that we broaden our tax base in order to raise more money for our community so that we can operate a better community. And so now the assessment branch has in, decided that they're going to come in here and lower the property value to accommodate a smaller increase in taxes. That's not, that's not the direction I think that we're supposed to be heading in. I could be wrong, but I think the idea is to broaden the tax base. And if, if every time there's an opportunity to increase the amount of taxes we collect is cut off by the assessment branch by lowering the property value, I think that's what I heard earlier, then run up!
But it changes the portion, right? So it goes from being, I don't know what the portion is as a church, so it goes to 65, right?
Yeah.
Whatever it is now.
It'll be up to 65.
So that's not lower, like it's, what you're saying is incorrect, how's that? It's lower than, you're getting more money, so that's the goal, right?
The taxes of $3,000 are based on, on those four lots, on the current assessment. And so if that becomes commercial, then that would see an increase. But they're trying to keep the increase at a minimum by lowering the value of the property.
But they're almost doubling too.
I know that, I know that, but you know...
Like it's just an equation, right? They're going to come in and they'll say, there's this much square feet, you can rent this much, this is what the average rate is, and then they do...
And the building hasn't been reassessed in years, I was informed, for this time.
Oh, I do know, sorry, I'll just, I do know that commercial, breakfast, okay?
Yeah, for sure, sure, right.
The role of the assessment branch is to assess a building at fair market value today. I assume that they will do it that way accordingly. The intended comment that was heard may well have been in anticipation of it dropping because it hadn't been done in a while or something, which they reduce over time, there's a balancing act.
That may be the case.
So that's fine. As long as they give us a fair assessment, we apply the appropriate tax and the appropriate formula, and the end number is what it is. But as you say, the church needs to be aware, because they have different points of view.
Margaret.
Well, I was just going to say, I do realize too that the commercial value has decreased in the town, but, and it's very nice to say something about the increase in taxes because I really think he really, he did not realize that, so it's very common courtesy.
Well, I'm okay to move this ahead to the first reading, but this will be second reading?
This is the second.
Okay, well, I don't want to rush this thing through and have second and third reading until our information has been gathered on this, by the traffic study and as well as the, how the church feels about the traffic.
So we want a traffic study done?
That's the one I'm saying, I'm saying until he knows when you go in there, you can't do a traffic study because you don't know what you're putting in there.
But if a traffic study is required, it'll be at the cost of the, of the applicant.
We can amend that into the rezoning?
Yeah, and it'll be part of the approval process of the rezoning application.
Okay.
What we do need is a clear understanding of the traffic, current traffic regulations at that intersection. Because if you go from, that's just an entry exitway, coming south, you can't turn in, coming north, there's nothing that says you can't do a left turn, except apparently a double line, which in the winter doesn't exist, sort of thing. So we have to be careful that we don't end up with a violation trap problem and get everybody mad.
Yeah.
Because, because the difference in traffic may be bingos and church are different times than shopping during the day, sort of thing, so.
I just set clear signage further down the road for entry, and the one that's there right now would be for exit only, so I just, we need to...
A professional needs to come in and do a traffic study and come up with a plan, and we're not smart enough to do that. Not that we're not smart enough to do that, but it's not our forte.
All right, be careful, where are you going? All right, so we'll, do you have an understanding where we're headed here?
Yeah, I will let Mr. Barbeau know.
Crystal, do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
I'll let Mr. Barbeau know the difference, possibility of taxes.
Okay.
And that he needs to...
And that's not for sure, no, but that's...
And that's not a positive number, I'll give him a rough idea. So do you want, I won't bring anything back for the next meeting? You want to hold off before we go with second, third?
I think we do, don't we?
Unless something...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Maybe the whole, if we get the additional information, or is that additional information we provided when we do the second and third reading?
It's up to you guys, because it could come back to another committee of the whole with the information.
What information are we looking for, right? Because we're not going to know traffic, we're not going to get a traffic study till we know, like, how it's used today isn't going to change three weeks from now.
I think it just said he...
He wants to get a zoning to go change that, so it's got to be a condition of whatever they come to. For us to go and say, you need to put a sign, that's not our role, right? So as long as it...
Church is aware.
The church is aware of the taxes, then we can go forward and have that as a condition. That'd be my...
Derek, if the church is fine with the taxes, let's rock along, but...
Yeah, other than the caveat that if a traffic study is needed, that that be in there, but I see no problem with it coming forward unless we're told otherwise by the applicant.
Okay, so you'll have a conversation and then... All right, 3.2, variation order number 2018-05 Cameron McKay.
I'm just going to call conflict.
Yeah.
So this was part of the public hearing that was held tonight. I don't think I need to go through the local information. Sam and Randy are both here to answer questions in regards to this. To Margaret's comment, there were about purchase agreements, there were two agreed purchase agreements signed, one was done in 2014, one was done in 2015. Attached to the first one was a piece of paper stating that you had to be 125 feet setback, yes. And then I'll let Randy and Sam...
We also heard that the original plans were submitted, there was a land survey done, and I just, I don't see how, I think, I think we're opening up a big hornet's nest that everyone along that property, along that bay is going to say, I'm moving mine out closer.
And this was a condition made by Sustainable Development when subdivision was applied for it, was not our condition?
No.
We had to meet that condition to get the approval from Sustainable Development, so... And when, when we're approving variations and stuff like, or to, the survey is what we go by, not the plans. The survey is the legal document that we use when we make decisions, if it needs a variance, if it meets the zoning requirements. The building plan is only for building inspectors. It has nothing to do with the placement of the building on the property and the required widths and distances and stuff.
And so, okay.
So I agree exactly what you're saying. So we have a legal survey that says it's supposed to be 100 feet, or I can't remember, it's not in front of me right now. Mr. McKay's saying, I think he stated, one corner is only five feet over, and there's Southern comments that he's 65 feet from the shore, so there's a big discrepancy. We can't have a discussion until we know for sure. And sending our guys to do it, I fully agree, the other side's going to say, you know, they don't know what they're doing, and then his, the other team will send their guy and it'll be the same thing. So for me, the only way we can have a discussion is have Vulcan Koechke come back at the owner's expense, have the legal survey done again, so we can say, here's the original one that he submitted, here's the one now, and if it is two feet off or five feet off, then maybe there's worth having discussion. But if it's 30 feet off, you're going to say, you got a problem here, right? But we don't know that, so for us to sit here for an hour talking about it, it's fun and all, but I mean, let's just go forward and say, go get another survey done.
Randy spoke with him Monday and asked him to do that, and he made it very clear tonight that he's not willing to do it.
Unless we direct him to do it, is what he said. Say, I'm not going to do it, it's a thousand bucks unless it's directed by town.
Or I want, if he's not willing to do, I can't hear like anything else I'm saying.
Oh, sorry.
He's saying that, well, I didn't get that from, from Mr. McKay. He said, it's a thousand dollars, I'm not just going to go do one because, right? If the town's going to ask me to do one, then I will do it.
That's my understanding.
And that's what I heard him say, I could be wrong, but I think regardless, we say, hey, we want a legal survey done to sort this out.
His exact words, unless council instructed me to do it.
So we really need to see the results of this, of the survey before we can make any kind of adjudication.
So same firm, everything, they come up, does that sound, right? There's only one firm that does it, so I don't know.
Brian, he can confess his guilt by applying for a variation, so why should we change it? Two is, there's a legal document and then there's drawings for your construction, your house, and they're not the same.
No, they're not. So that's why if we have another legal survey, then we'll know, because Alan's right, if it's, if it's a couple of feet, it's no big deal. If it's 30 feet, it's a huge deal.
Right, and she'll decide if he knows how close or far away it is because the legal survey isn't cheap.
I believe I heard somebody that wrote it a thousand, so.
Sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
Did you get like any sort of opinion or anything from Sustainable Development, like whether they would even entertain the idea of changing the 100 foot setback, or if they were really firm on that?
I would have to check with Randy, sorry.
Is there, is there really firm on that? That's, that's over our heads, that's...
My, my recollection was that there was pretty, pretty solid, like there wasn't a lot of wiggle room here at all.
And then the 100 foot setback doesn't start right in the shoreline, right? It actually starts in the water?
High watermark.
Yeah, the high watermark.
And property.
And high watermark and property line?
Property line is what the current survey shows as being a setback of 100 feet.
Okay.
Did you, sorry, Crystal, did you catch that?
No, I didn't hear that, sorry.
Property line is what shows the high watermark.
I've never seen the language related to the high watermark, because the high watermark isn't indicated out there.
Yeah.
Surveyor may have that information, but we don't.
It doesn't start in the water though, does it?
No, it can't.
No, it doesn't start in the water.
The high watermark has to be the most highest recorded height of that water, and right now the water is currently a foot lower than normal, so to go to that, the water is irrelevant to anything.
Yeah. Okay, so we're good on this one?
Yes.
We're going to hold off?
Your survey, and you want us to check with Sustainable Development?
For sure.
Okay.
And then let him know that we'd like to do another survey at his expense.
Do we reject it, or do we...
We can table it.
I think we're tabling it until we have more information.
I'm just wondering what, what's the difference? If a question's asked and then we say, well, no, we don't approve it, they can bring it back at a later date with new information and everything else, can they not?
Is it bad or gen, one way or the other?
He said he didn't want to do the survey, so it was fine, we just...
I took that the other way. He said he didn't want to do it unless we're going to ask him to do it. And I get that because it's a thousand bucks, so he's not going to drop a thousand bucks unless we're telling him, you need to do it. And I can appreciate that. But further to your point, Brian, and it's a question for Jen, is it?
We table it.
Table it, that's just the easiest way to go, and that's easy.
We would just table.
I get what you're saying.
Because if you approve it or not approve it, then you're, you're not obviously going to approve it. If you do a resolution to not approve it, then you have to start the whole process over.
So...
And I don't think you want to really start making a pay again and do another public hearing. So I would recommend tabling it.
Until we get the survey.
Yeah, we'll table it, we'll get the, let's see if he wants to get the new survey, and then once we get the information, Sam and Chris and, or sorry, Sam and Randy and myself will review it, and we'll go from there, and it'll come back to committee of the whole before it comes to council or decision.
Okay.
Okay, no, I just have to, so he's, he's applied for the variation, and he's, and he's signed the purchase agreement saying 100 feet, right? So he's wrong in that because he built it closer, so...
But we're not sure if he did, that's the problem.
But he's already saying that he's too close. Why, he's already, he's already too, he's already saying that he's too close.
Right.
But by applying for a variation, right? So it looks like, it's what Brian said, he's already admitted that he's wrong, so we should not be approving this variance because he's in the wrong. Am I making, am I, is that understandable?
Because very, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you are absolutely right. However, I think, I think that we can save time and allow this thing to do what it needs to do, just by, if we have, if we have a new legal survey, then that's what it is, right? So I mean, if it is, if it does turn out that it's only a couple of feet, then, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to put them to the expense of over, over one or two feet. But if it is 30 feet, that's big, that's big. And so that would require, you know, us to say, look, you can't do that. So I just, I think it's important that, that everybody is absolutely sure.
I understand what Margaret's saying. Already, I do, I totally do, and you're right, but you're gonna, I don't know, the timing and...
I think Sam and...
You have to come to a microphone.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
We're just having a discussion. I think what Ms. Conover's saying is accurate in the sense that he has made a variation request to be 75 to 80 feet from the water. Whether he is or not is irrelevant. If he turns out to be 100 feet away, he's still asking to be 80 feet away or 75 feet away, whether it's not. So that's kind of what the question is. Now, we can kind of skip that process and say, okay, let's get the survey, then reevaluate it, but I don't understand the process of, can you or can't you say, but you're asking for something that we can't even do because of the fact that Sustainable Development said 100 feet.
I just, I think in the unlikely, unlikely event that he's right, then we won't have to go through this entire process all over again.
But it's almost irrelevant whether he's right or not either. The request is to be 75 or 80 feet from the water, that is his variation application. If he's 100 feet, why is he making a request to be 80 feet away? He's not going to move his foundation forward if that's approved, so he's asking to be approved for something that may not be legally right, whether he is in that location or not. I think is the question.
Table it.
Now, does he have to reapply? I think that's what we're trying to avoid. Get the proper information so then we can make an informed decision on, do we really need to do anything about this?
Exactly.
But his request really is to be 80 feet from the water. So when you add up all the measurements he currently has, which Sam and I have measured, and I said they can be as valuable as the contractor's measurements, you add up what is there. Currently, if I was to put money on anything, he is 75 feet from the water. That is my guess right now, and that doesn't matter because he's requesting to be 75 feet.
I, I understand everything you're saying, you know, and I understand that, you know, that we're so sure that we put a stop work order on.
No, we put the stop work order because nothing has ever been inspected out there and everything has changed from his plans. That's why it's...
Well, that's another way of saying that, you know, you're too close to the water.
No, no.
No, because actually the garage was ever, the garage was built before the house was. The garage was actually built before the house was. The garage didn't, or the house didn't even come into play until June 6th when the site was visited. So there was an entire structure built, which was also not built by the permit application, so actually right now he has no permits.
So let's, to move this thing forward, I suppose we ask him to get the legal survey so we know, we can talk with some, in confidence, not that I question your guys' points, but otherwise it puts two teams against each other, right? So you have a third party that can make a professional opinion, then we can have this discussion. I agree with what you're saying, Margaret, but at this point, that part's always...
We have to give him a bit of a reasonable doubt here to make his case, to make his points.
And in the meantime, we can follow up on Crystal's point, whether it's even, even if it was two feet, would the province even consider that?
Yeah.
Because that might be totally out of our control.
Look, this is really, you know, this is going south for him real fast, so, you know, I mean, but, but still, I would just like to give...
It might be something that you, council doesn't even have the authority to approve, that the...
We don't know that.
Yeah, it depends what Sustainable Development says, it was not the town's condition.
We're just lacking some information.
Right, we're lacking information to make a judgment on what is currently there, what is the question being posed tonight.
I think perhaps that it's going to require three readings, so, you know, I'm prepared to...
Get the information, have the discussion.
I thought this was a bylaw.
It's a variation, no?
Oh, it's only a variation, oh, okay, okay. Yeah, then I would, I would just like to just give it thing a couple of weeks to find out if, A, what government says, and B, what an independent survey says. I know you guys do your job, but it's frustrating.
I guess to Randy's point, the question that he's asked is approve 75 to 80 feet distance. Are we, are we actually, is that what we're saying tonight, we're considering 75 to 80 feet?
No.
What I'm saying is we can't consider anything because we don't know for sure, right? So get the information and then we can have that discussion. It's, it's like talking about the traffic study before we know what store's going in there. We're doing the exact same thing. We're saying, well, this, this, and this, well, we don't know, we need a survey done to say, okay, this guy poured his foundation here, it was also 5 feet, it's not, it's 2 feet, or maybe it's 20 feet, I don't know. But we're talking around like what, what should be first, and we don't have all the right information here. So there's two pieces of information that are key to making the decision, and if we have that, then we make the decision. We're trying to make a decision, what if that and that, and we're going to be here for hours. It's like, again, having a traffic study for a store, we don't know what it is or where it's going.
But because, because the homeowner came and tried to change the conversation to 2 to 3 feet or something at the back end from 20 to 25 feet, the question is 20 to 25 feet, and I don't think this council will ever say, yeah, everybody that bought lots, go ahead, shorten it up by 25 feet.
That's not what it speaks to.
Well, that's, yes, but that's what he's asking for.
I understand what you're saying, Brian, and I agree, but we can't make a decision till we have all that data. We don't have the data, so when we get it, we'll make that decision. I agree with you, that seems absurd, but we don't, right now we don't 100% know, and we need an independent body to tell us exactly where they are.
Also, he may have come up with that number based on hearing the results of our measurements, so I think it's fair to just get the survey done, you know, reassemble the troops, and then, and then Brian, your question becomes very relevant, is that something that council can be willing to? But let's get that number tightened up completely and then...
And we may go to Sustainable Development, and they may say, you know what, change it to 75 feet or something, then this variation almost becomes void, it's not necessary, we would just have to amend our bylaw to represent that.
My, my, and I, again, I could be wrong, but my recollection that that was a pretty hard line from government. So, I mean, putting these laws together was not the easiest thing that we've ever done in the Town of Pond, so.
I do understand what Margaret's saying. At the end of the day, the application is wrong.
So what he says in here, reasons for support on his application, right, planning application, proposed change, changes, placement of cabin varied to allow cabin to be 75 to 80 feet from shore. Reasons in support, building permit issued for 65 feet from shore, that's not true, totally not true. I just, I just got to point that out, that's...
Oh, yeah, and like he said, it maybe was a misunderstanding, misunderstanding, but the building permit is not based on the building plans. The building permit was based off of the survey.
Well, the survey, it's a two-step process. The survey gets approved by a different office than the building permit does. So when that was handed to me from Mr. McTager to say, this is now yours because we have approved the zoning aspect of it, I then do nothing but the construction. They have approved that. Once they change those plans, coming almost two years later of things being built, nothing inspected, that permit is now void, so we start from square one. Now, I think the discussion tonight is running in circles. I think we all agree that a survey needs to happen, no matter what, we need to know the location. But the variation should have said, we would like to vary where our current location is and place it where it is, instead of giving numbers, because you can't vote on something we don't know number of for sure. But the question on the table is, I want to... But the question on the table is, I want to move 75 feet, are we saying that that's allowed? No. If the question was, can we leave it where it is? I don't know, let's ask the question of, where is it really?
No, no, we're seeking new information, more information, that's what we're seeking, and we can just hold back just a very short period of time, I don't think it's going to take forever to do this, and have that information, and then we can make our decision. I just, this is someone who said, do you think we lack information all the time? And here we are, just looking for more information, you don't want it. I just like that.
I want it, but my concern becomes, we're pushing it back on a, on a question that I don't think one we can answer, because we, we have an agreement to have those lots with the province of 100 foot. So if we don't have the right to choose it, we're just sort of maybe leading them on a little bit, and it is building season, so, you know, is that going to mean another season gets lost, and then there's another extension?
Sorry, are you recommending, Brian, that we maybe find out whether that's a hard line before we ask Mr. McKay to get a survey?
No, no, I'm not, I'm asking council to decide whether they, they think it's important because we, how many lots have we got out there? Because it's another, how many, how many builders out there that want to do the same thing? And if we don't, if we don't make decisions on these things, it's a problem. Now, to make a decision on this, we're going a month down the road. So with luck, it'll be.
We can call a special meeting if we need to, it depends, I think, how quickly we can get the information, like, the bottom line is, right now, we don't have the authority to approve this variation because it was the province who put the 100-foot setback into place, and Mr. McKay signed a purchase agreement, agreeing to that, well, at the time it was 125-foot setback, and then the town removed their 25-foot setback. So I don't see how we can be asked to make a decision when we don't have all of the information that we need to make a well-informed, educated decision, and we're being asked to make a decision on something that we really don't have the authority to decide. We need to know whether the province is too willing to budge on that 100 feet. If they're not, that makes our decision really easy. We go back to the applicant and we say, I'm sorry, but, you know, the stipulation was put in by the province, they're very firm on that, so we're going to have to deny your variation, and you need to rectify the situation. If the province says, okay, we'll, we'll consider the 75 foot, and they change their stipulation, then we can have that conversation, but right now we can't, we don't have the authority technically to approve this variation, so we would have to deny it if we were forced to make a decision. But I don't see why we would push the issue and rush through this when we could wait a couple of weeks and get some more information, and I understand that it's building season and that the applicant wants to move forward with building their home, but, you know, council has the authority to call a special meeting if needed, and we really feel it's necessary, we can do that, and we could approve this in a week, we could approve it in two weeks, once we have that information.
That's what I was trying to say.
So would it be better to get a hold of Sustainable Development before we ask them for the new survey?
I would think so, I mean, you know, if Sustainable Development is willing, we're still going to want the survey, I think, so, I mean, in the sake, for, in the interest of time, he probably wants to get the survey done. Otherwise, we could wait, we could wait two weeks for an answer from the province, and then tell him that answer, and then how long does he have to wait to get a survey done?
Yeah.
If Sustainable Development is, is not prepared to move, then we're done. We're done.
The survey has to come forward no matter what, so the request has to be a survey because he has to reapply for a permit, because we currently don't know where the building is, so no matter what, the survey has to come forward.
I understand, I understand. We're just, we're just, we're just trying to make sure that everything is there that could be there. It's a, it's a tremendous amount of money being spent on a home, tremendous amount of money, so I kind of feel somewhat. Anyway, my recommendation is let's go get some more information before we, before we go down this.
Checklist single development and customer survey.
Yeah, and independent survey.
Can we, can we get a copy of the agreement with regard to the problems on that?
Sure, we have that, absolutely.
Whatever, whatever that language is.
Get a copy of the, of.
The two.
Yeah, with sustainable.
Oh.
Yeah. I remember, I remember that.
It's just a write-out from the province, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a letter.
Yeah.
This is the way it is, right. We'll have that on file. Anything else on this? Okay. Interesting discussion, thanks, everyone. Okay, item 4.1, board revision.
Sorry, just a second.
Yeah.
This one is basically straightforward, the town has received notification that the 2019 sitting of the board of revision date for 2019 assessment rule will be Monday, November 26, 2018, at 6:00 p.m., and of course, by law number 4540, council sits as the board of revision. We require a resolution to set the date and appoint myself as the secretary for the board of revision.
No issues?
No issues.
This will be for the 2019 assessment and any additions and deletions for 2018.
Right.
Where people can appeal, appeal them.
Peril on the counts.
This is for payroll period 13 in the amount of $120,067.79. Payroll period 14 in the amount of $1,003,931.89. Town of the Paw general checks in the amount of $301,862.90. EFTs in the amount of $191,058.26. Resolution will be required for those. Some checks just to point out, there was one for Sue's Water Technology and Solutions, that was chemicals, in the amount of $15,000 for the water treatment plant. There was another one for Jill Johnson Equipment, which was four bills for miscellaneous parts and a boot for the sweeper. And then there was Morgan Fuels for 70, approximately 71,000, that was airport fuel, and then Woolsey for almost $6,000, and that was parts for water distribution.
Oh, we forgot you.
Yeah.
I forgot you.
We finished, we moved on. I've never seen him once voting against paying the bills.
Require a resolution for that.
Yeah. Okay, what are we doing? Oh, we're purchasing a skeleton bucket.
This is a request from Graham Keller, the controller. Skeleton bucket is needed for the asphalt production, total cost approximately $5,000 from Cambrian, Cambrian equipment sales loaded. Recommendation is to proceed with the purchase using machinery and equipment reserve fund. Was this in the budget?
No, that's what I said, it's a reserve. Like, it's already a purchase, this is just, is it coming out of operating or is it coming out of reserve?
No, okay, never mind. Okay, so.
Resolution is per his recommendation?
Do we need to bring this forward then for, for resolution?
Yeah.
For, like, is this an emergency purchase? No?
It's a normal item, too.
Because it's coming out of the reserve fund, it needs a resolution.
Great, okay, okay, send a resolution forward. All right, 4.4, crosswalk tender.
This was the one I added today quickly, it's just for the crosswalk tender on Severn and Hogan. There was two tenders submitted, and the recommendation is to choose TriStar Traffic Control Systems in the sum of $73,958.50, including taxes, to be accepted, and this was a budgeted item.
I remember that.
What was the budgeted amount?
What was the budgeted amount?
It was myself.
For the replacement of the crosswalk.
I, I wonder about the budget.
Yeah.
So we need a resolution accepting that tender.
Yeah. Bring a resolution forward for that. All right, Deputy Mayor, let's name some candidates.
With the result that we now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee of the whole, Mayor Scott and the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.
Thank you, everyone.